Look under for the latest email.
Yeah.
It should, it should stat.
I can extend it if you need to.
He's like.
Secretary of State. Secretary of State.
Is the church in that? Is the church in this? Oh, that's.
It's all on here.
Yeah, okay. What?
This is your seven.
Wow. That actually sounds fun. That's one thing I like.
I'll know if you'd like coming up and down some hills.
Mine is.
Three powers and four leaders. We've had about, an average of about.
She could send. I think we. Everybody we're expecting. So why don't we go ahead and get started? Please call the. Also, order.
Call the order at seven oh four. Chair Williams.
You.
Vice Chair Reese.
President.
Commissioner Corral.
Here.
Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Blaster.
Here.
Commissioner Penzenner. Commissioner Di.
Here.
Mayor Potem, sir.
Here.
James. Thank you. Everyone saw the email that Stephanie stepped down.
Now, I think it's a fact.
Right into it. And I think Timmy said that she was already known for so. Don't count on so.
So we'll put out applications again.
Okay. That was my next comment.
Yes.
Okay, we will have to approve all the minutes from the May twenty second, twenty twenty four meeting. Everyone had a chance to review them.
I did want to make a note. I changed the date. I had the date wrong on the minutes. I changed the date, April twenty fourth.
Okay, anyone find any other? Comments? Good to have your.
Regular.
I didn't find anything. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Certainly.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yep.
Commissioner Blaster.
Yes.
Commissioner Penzenner. Commissioner Corral.
Yes.
Vice, Vice Chair Reese.
Yes.
Chair Williams.
Yes. Okay.
Yes. I don't know. Yeah. I get things to be in circ.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any? Public comment on non-agenda items? See no public here. Anyone online? Okay. I see none. So we will move on. We'll close public comment on non-agenda items and move on to action items. We have one action item this evening on the agenda. It is the Fifth Street right-of-way vacation. And Rick, would you be so kind as to introduce it for us?
Absolutely. So this is for the right-of-way vacation request from Fifth Street. Town is the property owner is requesting the right-of-way vacation from Fifth Street to order the span or to expand the property boundary of the Old Town Shop Block. On February twentieth, twenty twenty four, the team's directors even affair had presented the request for consideration of special review use agreement allowing teams to lease the town on property at seven fifty West Fifth Street to trump a childcare facility. During the SRU application presentations, Dean requested that town vacate a portion of Fifth Street in order to expand the boundary of the Old Town Shop Block. Teens Inc. has submitted a right-of-way vacation application in March. However, due to the upcoming special election regarding the SRU, Teens does not seek the road vacation at this time. At the May seventh, twenty twenty four meeting, the Board of Trustees approved town to be the applicant of the road vacation for Fifth Street since the Old Town Shop Block and Fifth Street are both town-owned properties. The Board of Trustees acknowledged that the benefit of continuing forward with this vacation application is that the town can seek to expand the parcel regardless of its future use. At the May twenty first meeting, the Board of Trustees approved Resolution twenty twenty four twenty dash twenty six authorizing the town administrator to apply for the fifth row vacation on behalf of the town. So go to the bottom here. In the in value, evaluating the decision consideration should be given to the value of the land, the current use of the land, any potential future future use. The public benefit of retaining the land, the public benefit of disposing of the land, the manner proposed. Whether the proposed disposition is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and put from adjacent property owners, non-conforming lots that cannot be developed otherwise. The board will consider if the land could ever be used for utility right-of-way or if it could be trumped forward. When a roadway is vacated, it is split with a budding landowners. Each landowner would receive land up to the center of the roadway. In the case of of the section of Fifth Street that the road vacation is being requested for, Jeanette Smith is the only abutting property owner, which means the roadway would be split evenly in half. The northern half going to Jeanette's and the south half going to, southern half going to the town. Jeanette Smith will quit claim for a portion of the road to town. This means that if approved, all of West Fifth Street will be added to the footprint of seven fifty West Fifth Street following the completion of a subdivision. There's a summary there somewhere this has happened in the past. Town staff does not have any concerns with this. Initially, fire, a Neverland Fire Protection District had concerns about engine turnaround and access issue, but town spoke, town staff spoke with chief on November twenty twenty three, who stated that making Fifth Street is possible. He did know he's less concerned about having a turnaround at the corner of Fifth Street in Griffin, but that ensuring that there is a large enough turnaround at Fifth Street in Colson is most important. For Andrew Marful or per Marshall Jocelyn, since the town is not seeking to vacate all of Fifth Street, but only a portion, there are no concerns for the fire department. However, they will review all plans for the being constructed on the site to make to ensure the building is not obtained on the engine's ability to turn around. So question for you, does the PC recommend approval of the application to vacate Fifth Street? If so, does the PC recommend approval with any conditions? There's some motions there. You'll find survey attached resolutions. The letter signed by Jeanette Smith and ordinance eighty six five. So let me know if you have any questions.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Rick? Seems pretty straightforward to me. And so what does Jeanette Smith have to do as part of the? She's gonna donate her, her section. Does she?
Yeah, it's a quick claim deed, correct Attorney Madison?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably what, how she would transfer the property to the town by quick claim deed.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Questions? And I don't think we have any any public, but I will open it up to the public, just in case someone just joined. Comment?
Any public comment online? Rhonda, did you want to say anything or no?
Okay, not up close the public comment for this item and bring it back to planning commission for any other questions or comments?
Yeah, okay. The thing was mentioned. Is that a condition that? How I didn't know at all?
Um, no, not at this time. Streets didn't really have any concerns. Same thing with other ways that they can file. Put it another way.
So I would be content with this. Ends up through the group. Sales. This town evidence.
No, town has no plans at this time. But yes, if it doesn't go through, then that that footprint would expand if there were any future plans. Whole footprint could be used. If it does go through, I will say though, I, uh, teens think we'll continue to work with town staff to ensure that everything, yeah, is set there.
And so this just kind of simplifies the process.
Correct, yeah. Keeps it going. And yeah, the town staff, I spoke directly with Jeanette to make sure she understood. She's in full support of hoping that the special election.
And I think you said regardless of what happens, town staff and fire department will review any plans for that.
Correct, yeah. They will still be held to our code and building and fire standards.
Okay.
And that one also include environmental, because of that creep theme around there?
Correct.
They'll go before staff.
That was a town, town neighbors received their name, raised their child, was sharing. It must have been something. Something for whatever reason. But I guess we haven't heard from the family, father and Janet.
That's it.
I'm sure they had a picture. Their, their. That's their daughter, right there with her stuff.
Yeah, her granddaughter was aware, but you know.
But is the letter of, of a land legally binding? Or?
Attorney Madison?
So the question is, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing everybody. I'm just wondering if your microphones are on.
Just got to speak for our listeners.
She was asking if the letter is legally binding.
It is not, no. But she doesn't have an ownership interest yet. She doesn't, Ms. Smith doesn't own the land until the ordinance is adopted.
So instantly binding once it all takes effect, the ordinance effect.
Right, yeah. Then we need to, yeah, then we need to execute legal documents to transfer that property to the town.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else or points? The properties to the northeast and northwest, do those count as adjacent properties? No.
Maybe not.
So the road is essentially, it is owned by town right now.
Correct.
So it's.
Yeah. Yeah, when you pay, you have access to the, or just offer up the property to the owner as you.
So I was just looking at the, the conditions of the assessing the value of the land. It's basically void because it just goes for town. To town.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just expands that footprint for possible future. Use.
Yep. Thank you. So if the town decides to do something with that a lot themselves, it's.
Could increase the value, you know what it is.
Okay, any other questions? If not. We have a motion.
I need to recommend approval of ordinance eight, six, five, vacating West Fifth Street.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Penzenner? Yes. Vice Chair Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Di?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Corral?
Yes.
Chair Williams.
Yes.
I know I cannot ask for actions. I was, yeah, that's what attorney, Attorney Madison. Mayor Potem Sterling doesn't vote on action items, correct?
Uh, she can vote on recommendation of this.
Okay, she can.
Yeah, it's not quasi judicial.
Okay, sure.
If it's quasi judicial, she wouldn't be here.
I would be. I would, I would never exit myself.
We would work. Or we would throw you off.
Right. Uh, yes. Thank you.
Her vote was not opposed by.
Yes, we had the decision.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's what I was about to miss.
Believe it or not, bylaws.
So Attorney Madison, we're looking for clarification. Is it just I'm allowed to vote for a tie?
I'm pulling up the bylaws.
Special problem, right?
Oh, you guys are right. Oh, no, no. And so it says that, it says, let me read this to you. So planning commission shall consist of nine residents of the town. One member shall be a member of the Board of Trustees appointed by the mayor with approval of the Board of Trustees. This member shall vote only in the event of the tie vote among the other members. Oh, it is right. And only upon matters of legislative concern. So only when there's a tie. Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Good catch. Okay. All right, so that completes our action items for this evening. We have one discussion item on the agenda. The modification to the industrial zone in the residential use group table. Uh, this is a discussion item. So Rick, if you would be so kind as to introduce this one?
Absolutely. So as Chair Williams said, this is a modification to the industrial zone in the residential use group table. In twenty twenty three, the town, uh, contract, I can't say it. Works with Houston, two thousand, thousand weeks assessment under the Department of Local Fairness Housing Planogram. One of the requirements for this grant was to adopt one municipal code change that promotes affordable and or alternative housing and also reduce barriers. At the December fifth meeting, the Board of Trustees approved four of the ordinances. One of the ordinances was ordinance eight fifty five, uh, which was the housing needs assessment use group table amendment. Uh, ordinance eight fifty five created a residential use group table so that the different housing types allowed either who used by right or special reviews could be clearly designated by zone. Uh, as noted in the chart above, no residential homes were permitted in industrial zone. Prior to the adoption of eight fifty five, family care and mixed uses were allowed under special reviews. Um, but at the, at the June four, oh, yes. Just leave it there. I'm going ahead. Uh, June fourth, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees meeting, staff brought forth an agenda item. Um, a land use code consideration for nineteen West First Street. Um, in August, twenty twenty three, the single-family home on this parcel was completely destroyed. A single-family residential home is considered a non-conforming use under the use group table. Since the original structure was non-conforming use, under Neverland Municipal Code sixteen dash one eight, it stipulates that if a non-conforming structure is destroyed or damaged, the restoration of the structure must commence within six months after the date of the structure was destroyed and completed within eighteen months after the date in which the restoration commenced. Assuming that the damage or destruction was not caused directly or indirectly by intentional act of the owner of the property or the structure, or any agent or representative such as uh, such owner has determined by the appropriate governmental agency. The homeowner, Jerry Rothwell, thirty years old, admitted to playing with a detain lighter that caught his clothes on fire in the residence. Therefore, it has been, therefore, since it has been more than six months since the structure was destroyed and the owner was at fault, building a single-family residential home is now under perishable. Therefore, all that is eligible to be constructed on this site is anything allowable in the industrial use zone. Uh, Jesse Seagreets and his business partner are interested in constructing housing out of the site to help increase the housing stop in Neverland, which is a priority identified in the town's housing needs assessment. Specifically, they would like to construct, construct some multiple family housing. Uh, since reconstructing the single-family residential unit, it is not permissible nor is it developed or nor is the development of any multifamily use housing. Uh, so Seagreets and his business partner were requesting that the Board of Trustees consider it an amendment to the code. Possible amendments could include revision to Neverland Municipal Code sixteen dash one eighty five to remove or amend the timeline in which the structure has to be rebuilt following the destruction or the damage in the default language, which would allow them to reconstruct the single-family residential structure or to amend the Neverland Municipal Code sixteen dash thirty two to allow residential use groups in industrial zones. Um, the planning commission identified in their work session in May twenty, at May twenty second, was S T group um, that the concert, or regarding the comprehensive plan that prohibiting residential uses in industrial zone under ordinance eight fifty five was an oversight and agreed to discuss possible amendments to allow use allowable uses in industrial zones within the residential group table. The Board of Trustees gave a nod of four to direct the P C to revisit this residential use group table and assess the type of residential uses that could be allowed either used by right or through special reuse in the industrial zone. It is important to know the fire department has concerns about the structure from a safety perspective. They would like to see it demolished before anyone gets hurt. Um, and are in support of necessary code amendments that will help expedite the removal of the structure. So some questions for you today are what use group tables would the P C like to see in industrial zones, if any? Um, of the residential use groups identified as allowable, which ones would the P C recommend use by right or special group reuse? Again, if you find that you think residential should be in the zone. Um, that's all the questions for you. Let me know if you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. So as I understand it, right now there is no residential allowed in the industrial zone, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And maybe Nicole, could you maybe lighten us from discussion at the Board of Trustees?
Yes. Um, so when this came to us, of course, for in a little bit more context too, we just had revisited the S T R. Um, and we had removed industrial zone from being able to have an S T R in it. We did grandfather the few that were already there from S T R licenses, but we said no to the industrial zone simply because their housing is not typically allowed in industrial zone. And one of the things I was referencing recently was the quote that the S E group gave us in that cool little document, the last planning commission that we had, um, where they state that one of the things that they recommend Neverland to do is align existing land uses with current zoning designations to reduce the relevance of legal non-conforming uses, which we have in the industrial zone. They also said to reassess the use of industrial zones to ensure they are optimally leveraged by industrial activities or other desired industrial uses. So I took that to hear, hey, you have some industrial zones that are being used for industrial uses and you should be looking to make sure that you're mitigating any of those non-conforming uses from creeping into the industrial zone. Um, and so that was a lot of the conversation that we had had then. And again, I practiced this with the fact that I sat on the housing committee and have been pushing for that. And where I, you know, I personally, because I was speaking for all the B O T, but where I was personally conflicted is yes, we need housing, but is this the right spot for housing? Like, are we, are we sort of burdened with the hard decisions to state those types of parcels? Those are, those are sacred in a way because from an economic development standpoint, we can put those to use. Uh, one of the arguments that was put forth by Jesse was like, well, nobody's using it. Nobody's used them in the past. And that's, I don't know that that's a fair argument because I also don't think that we've had a true economic development, again, either to try to attract some of these businesses into our light industrial zones. Um, so, so that was a lot, a lot of the conversation. Uh, and again, we wanted to, you know, to get to you all to get, to get your perspective.
Great, thank you. So I mean, one, did you discuss, you know, the option of rezoning, maybe perhaps part of industrial zone might fit better with the surrounding neighborhood?
Um, so are we speaking specifically that parcel of land that Jesse is looking to? Well, so when we did look at the map, it is surrounded, I believe, let's go back to our zoning map. It has industrial button against it. It has, I believe, the neighborhood commercial. Let me go back.
General commercial.
Yes.
Neighborhood commercial. And then way farther down is the high density residential. That's way past it. That's it. That's the way it is.
Right. So what they're asking and to be zoned to is something that actually, you know, we'd have to it's not the high density, but it would be like a neighborhood commercial or a general commercial adjacent to that. I mean, I think that's.
I mean, that's, that's one option that whoever wants to develop that site could do a rezon at that time. I mean, Roger, can you recall historically why that? Why that those residential buildings are in industrial?
They were there because of nineteen eighty two and they, that's what we did to somebody.
Right. And why was that? So industrial, yes.
It was not industrial because of the the, the migrants who still had a dream on the bill. And so in forty years, that's when you know, they, they resolved that idea then because of the, the mining background and the. Yeah, mining still in our chapter sixteen. So that was the biggest thing, we, is that just that.
They owned that.
And he said, okay. And he was actually on the zoning committee. Ross was here. And when they even had a secret number and public face. I think what Nicole's saying, it's, 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 it's a fine line now, nineteen eighty, so fifty years later. You know, when just like we've had a lot of commercial vacant area. There's make it now, long that commercial, you know, and then all that industrial, that's the one spot that is industrial. But I I agree that now it's really common and we try to keep, that's that's fifty years of all the changes in town, some chances for changes in town. That's like, what's gonna happen? Or I want to stay down. So, so it's, that's I don't have an answer, but those are. So, so it's, that's, I don't have an answer, but those are prior questions that for me are out there. And, you know, so there's a little bit of trying to clean up the sound of it. And, you know, somewhere I always thought that's something that should be brought on in the comp and decide, you know, what the future looks like for some of these parcels. So, um, so I kind of summed up my thoughts, I suppose. I personally, somehow this is more personal than having public trees, a poppy and some things. There always is a thought, you know? So all four were along the tree and the tree trail, all those things that we kind of wanted to see. So quickly, it's just property. And it always seems that it belongs more residential or. The general, not general commercial, but the next, the next use type thing. Um, that's just because there's always a need for neighborhood commercial, it's something like that. Or just use that, excuse that. The idea of, it's hard to decide whether, you know, to say all industrial, then you can't. How to involve in all these other things that will even allow that side of that. So, I guess I haven't really helped that all happen. I think it's next use or neighborhood commercial, what you know, it seems that way. But I don't know, seems like the answer, but Nicole says that for fifty years we've heard, you know, we need to have some kind of light industrial, some places for startups, for people to come up here. But that may be true, but I also feel that in light of the sustainability, uh, coming eighteen miles up the hill, um, how do you meet life with East Pearl Street? Which now people can compete with these trucks with a small kind of industrial thing. Everybody's gone to Erie, Longmont, or Commerce City for those type of things where people are gonna be putting, you know, tents together, all that type of thing. So that idea that you would have a distribution point center and drive fifty miles up here, be able to put bin packs together or do whatever, so might have an idea. It's a hard competition to do. So that, and I believe that's probably why it never happened. And that's why, you know, we didn't see it already, you know, stage just out of the questioning part. A lot of labor and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So it's all of those things. But I, I guess I would lean towards it being some kind of neighborhood or shore next to you, type things. You know, I, I think if we have industrial, I think it would be more of a commercial thing. Or things like the farming chairs, you know, that kind of things that we would want. Seems like we need property for that, that there already is some of that built.
I remember when we did the latest comp plan, we did have a discussion about developing along the creek and having uh kind of a best rate and walk away with shops and maybe some restaurants and and so forth uh as, as an option to, you know, having light industrial in the region. Uh, it's a beautiful piece of property, I mean, as far as the potential for staying.
As industrial. Correct, where the houses are?
Um, it's surrounded, so the houses are right in the middle of the Myerson property. And they're all surrounded by industrial. And then to your right is a neighborhood commercial, you know, Mount Residential way back. And then down, way down below the property is high density. But the way that it looks on the map, I can show you the map, but that would, you know, why don't you maybe help bring it through?
So that we have a single.
First, you know, a lot of it's just painted. There's really nothing that leaks.
All right, so I'm gonna zoom in. So you can. Right, bottom here. But it's got a purple portion there. There's like four kind of squares cubes up there. Um, no, can you see it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, yeah, it's really not, it's not very close to anything residential. This is all neighborhood commercial. I mean, there's Mount Residential to that like top left corner.
Houses are actually right where it's a little.
Yeah, all four, yeah.
Yeah, those were the non-conforming use, like, right, that were removed, I think you said in the eighties or whatever.
By the situation as it currently stands is that the seller is the person whose, whose property home burned down. And so anyone who would buy that lot would need to conform for the current zoning for use on that lot?
Yes, I believe his uh family has taken over the selling of the lot. But yes, they would have to conform to an industrial use.
Or request a rezone. So is the question before us then? Do we recommend a rezone? Or do we, or you just want to answer use table for residential at this point?
Yeah, so really the, I mean, we can obviously recommend what you guys want to recommend to the board, but the questions really were, um, if residential use groups are allowed within an industrial zone, what would you like to see allowable? Would you like to see it used by right or special reviews? Or do you just think that there should be no residential use at all? I mean, that's not a question for, but I think that's really kind of the essence of what we're getting here. Is residential makes sense? Um, this, obviously, this item coming before the board is really what initiated this conversation a little bit more. And we kind of realized we didn't discuss industrial much um with the housing study. Um, so it really could be, whatever the P C thinks I want to recommend to the board, I'm happy to relate anything.
So I have a, I have a question with the um, the S E group suggesting that we need to reassess the use of industrial zones to ensure they are optimally leveraged for light industrial activities. Like, is, do we need to get some further maybe input from the S E group? I mean, for them to kind of break that line.
So they did, so I, I, I offered to have them come tonight. They actually wanted to get, just without them saying anything, general feedback from the P C. And then at the next, um, I will be sending them notes after this meeting of kind of what was discussed. And they would like to, they're coming to the July meeting and they would like to really further discuss and give their opinion on kind of what they think based on the comp plan. Uh, but they just kind of wanted some feedback without their say first.
Do, do we know if there's any sense of the town's preference with regard to greater industrial use versus greater need for housing? Right, in terms of priority?
I wouldn't, I would say from a town staff perspective, no, we, no. Um, but yeah, I, I think really what would make most sense is just general feedback, if you even think this should be a thing. And then when S E group comes next month, really discussing, discussing it further on why we initially thought this and based on their feedback and what they think should be there, maybe counter arguments, maybe we're aligned, who knows?
And the other piece too is you're giving a presentation of all publicly owned land that we can build affordable housing on.
Correct, so um, July sixteenth, I will be presenting um all the type of searches down on town owned land and kind of um agreements that I found on those pieces of land or what land is viable or anything along that lines. So this is kind of really just initial discussion because I think this would come with the comp plan. Uh, but it's really just, I feel like this item really brought it kind of to our attention. I don't think there's any urgency to move on this right away. Maybe for the buyer, possible buyers, but not necessarily the town.
The urgency may be to uh tear down the house that burned.
Correct.
And that right now, if the current owner still kept that property, they would be allowed to build residential there.
Yeah, they would not. They're not within our timeline.
They, they have some passing.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so I, I don't know specifically, but I would imagine they don't have any interest in getting a uh, demolition permit to then not know what they're getting rights with it. You know, I'm.
So your sense is that the owner's incentive is to be zoned so that property could be sold for someone else to do something with it?
This, this is not even, I think it's the buyer.
Yeah, so it's really the buyer. The buyer is interested in seeing if something which either be amended in code or use group would be allowed, so it makes sense for them to even buy it.
I'm just asking if we have.
No, 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 no opinion. I think they're still kind of dealing with the legality issues of some of that battery.
Well, they could, if you're without a seller, if.
That's, that's. They want to buy the incentive and somehow they would expedite the teardown. If they had a buyer, you know, on the red heat versus just sort of sitting there with them, not sure what's gonna happen to it.
Yeah, um, I don't see why we couldn't reach out to them and ask. I don't think anyone has spoken to the buyer or the seller, um, but I think more than half of the reach out. See that. I imagine they just want to sell it at this point and be done with it, I think is what we had gathered.
So rather than looking at changing the use for industrial um for what, what others would have recently would have in there, my instinct would be to try and for multiple reasons to be able to get the dangerous building or down and then get additional housing built there. It would be to carve out and rezone first where those houses are and then have a longer period of time where we can address potential uses for the industrial zone. I, I will tell you that though, when you start opening that up and saying, okay, we're gonna allow all these other uses there, now you take it away, it's something that's an attractive thing for a business, you know? We don't have it yet, but you know, as trustee Spurring said, you know, we don't have a big marketing campaign out there to bring an employer to town. Uh, you know, so that's a nice big chunk. There, you know, I, I think the easier way to go about that and to meet some housing goals uh would be to look at just carving out where those residential houses are right now uh on, on the zoning map, changing that over to, you know, lower median density residential, whatever that uh joining zone is there. And then take a more comprehensive look at how we make, or might not decide to change what's allowed in industrial zones.
Well, that was another thing that stuck out to me from the S E group is they said, you know, low-density residential land use accounts for fifty-two percent of all of our land in Netherland. And medium and high-density account for point five percent. So we haven't necessarily been aligning the zone with the actual use. We've been so flooded with single-family homes that now we almost have, we have two, we're missing that middle. Right, we're missing the middle of like the two bedrooms, that kind of thing. Um, and so, and I, but I also want to make sure I'm understanding correctly as well, like them removing that demolished building is not predicated on us making a recommendation or any rezoning or anything. In fact, we're, we're trying to, attorney Matt said we sent a letter, correct? I forget if I allowed to say that.
We're working on that, um, yes, but there are other, there are other issues, legal issues with the, that structure on the property in that condition.
Yeah, so that we're working to get it moved here.
Oh, we're not on that specific.
No, because that's a safety issue. The O T gave direction, get it off immediately.
That clarifies it.
Yeah, so that's happening. So this really does come back to this question of what are we gonna be when we grow up, right? What do we want these industrial? And I did a little thought exercise on, um, going back to our code. And it's like, what would be some of those like industrial things? And I just had a creative thought um exercise with it. One would be like a maker space, right? Those could be things that are attractive where you attract potters, jewelry makers, metal workers, leather goods, three D printing, might be a little bit harder, but other ones that seem to like make sense would be to attract that next um like food or beverage, you know, sort of entity that needs a pot of land that can also create economic vitality, create jobs within the region. Um, and another one, based off a lot of what happened this winter, is perhaps attracting a solar microgrid um company of some sort, right? I mean, that's what a light industrial use would be. And so, because when I initially thought industrial, I'm like, oh my gosh, like, yeah, that's awful. Yeah, exactly. That's what goes through my head. And I was like, well, wait a second. Like, what is exactly, could this mean? And the more I dug into it, I was like, oh, okay, like if we modeled it to fit the feel of Ned, but actually, you know, put that into our strategic goals for the B O T and said like this, these are the businesses we want to attract, you know, town, let's, what, how can we do that? Um, that was just some creative, like, thinking I was doing last week.
I fully agree, and I, I don't think the changing the residential use of industrial is something that we should recommend that we do, somebody can argue against it. Because that's not what it's intended for. And, and it's intended for light industry, like you said. And um, so doing a rezone of a particular section of it, um, leaving industrial the way it is for now. I mean, this is the perfect time to deal with this as we get with the comp plan. Is what, what do we want to do with that, you know, piece of property? So anyway, I would, I mean, we can, we should focus first on the discussion of the residential and industrial that go from there.
I just wanted to ask for a clarification. Are, were you suggesting that if they're, they're asking to rezone, just the permissions for that lot or for the entire area?
No, it's for to change industrial period.
So it would apply to.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because if you, yeah, if you're one, you'd have to get some.
But that would allow another thing to us that you could, if we rezone just that section where those houses are, that would remove that restriction and they can build housing on that, which is the intent, I believe, uh, of the people that want to buy. So, so.
But they're saying it can't be done just for those properties.
You could, we can rezone that with the recommendation, rezone just a section of it right there. Far that out and change the shape, it's where it's.
I, I said it can't be done.
I thought you said if it, it had to be the whole purple or nothing, if you do it for one, you bet it for all.
Well, if we, if we adjust the, the use group table and say, okay, we can allow residential in an industrial sound, then it applies to all. But if we take this one parcel and say, let's take this one little parcel there and let's rezone that to like high-density residential or something. That's what Vice Chair Reese is talking about. But as Vice Chair Reese had mentioned earlier, you allow that to happen. And then what do you open up yourself up to? Because change that to a residential use where there's, it's none of that around, right? That becomes tricky.
And what is the request being asked? Just is the request being asked that the table can change for the entire zone or for just the specific lot?
Yeah, so really, we're looking for feedback when they go to board trustees is to, does the planning commission think residential should even like be allowed? So when we change things out, um, a lot of the zoning, um, in different zones, some of these uh alternative housings turned into use by right or special review use. Um, and so, but industrial straight across now. And so it would really be, are there, are you, do you think in industrial, like a duplex makes sense? Or a four-plex, you know, things like that. So it's really just looking at those and um kind of going through with the chart that we have here. And should it be used by right? Should it not? Should we just not allow residential at all? It's just not something we really discussed in depth in the housing study. We didn't touch industrial at all, because I don't think it made sense at the time. I said, I don't think it made sense at the time. We kind of focused on those areas that are, they really have housing. Um, so it was just a
And then, and there is still a stated need for more like industrial uses and properties.
For sheep. Well, I mean, I think that's part of the, I, I know that's the information I want to receive from the SE group. Because for them to write that specific line of, hey, you should really reassess your industrial and make sure the lines with light industrial. I was like, oh, okay. Here are some experts that are kind of saying, based on the percentages of all your land. This, this one is being neglected and the more that it gets you served with, you know, housing, the less you're going to have to be strategic with it. So.
Why have it zone industrial?
Right, exactly. What's the point of it? And the point may be that this is something that I, I, once we get that information. And also, you know, the information that I'm also waiting for is, okay, where else are we able to build housing that's public plan? And there's these other developments that are being proposed for housing. Okay, now we need to look very strategically at the whole map here and assess then, you know, as Chair Williams was saying, do, do we still need to keep our industrial? Is there a strategic reason we need to keep industrial?
And do you want to mix it? In other words, you only have houses uh, or duplexes and then next to a factory or, or, you know, some industrial use. And then, then I think you've got a real mess. You've got a real large multitude of uses.
So I think what would make sense, and feel free to talk, is maybe some initial thoughts as this came to you. And then understanding July 16th, I will be making the presentation. I'll include that in our next meeting, just because SE group will be here and they'll say, based on your original feedback, you know, some of your initial first thoughts, this is what we're thinking. Um, so I think it would make sense because board trustees meeting will come right before the planning commission. And then I can try to put that all together and really get some solid feedback. So maybe this was a little too soon, but I think still a good conversation to have as either really wanted the opinion of the board without their say.
Well, I also think because the House did her, that just opened up the whole discussion as to how this land should be used.
Correct.
I think it was brought to us in that regard.
Correct, yes.
Based on the information we have right now, you know, my recommendation would be that we do not, or my application would be that we cannot look to make changes to include housing or other use groups into the industrial zone, but look more specifically at, you know, as it is right now, you know, somebody could buy that property and build a factory where that worked on houses. But it's also right back to, to real the residential process.
Right.
Uh, so that's where it's more logical for us to carve out just the section where the houses are. Potentially allow, um, you know, 19, uh, first, West Bridge Street to be rebuilt as a residential house. And then at a later time, uh, when we get more information from the SC group and as we find out about what available lots are, are in town for us to build, sort of the housing line. You know, we can live it up, but it seems like it would be unusual if we would say, okay, we're not going to, we're going to leave that industrial and we're just going to say, sorry. Because honestly, the truth of this is the owners of the property, they don't want to get stuck with a hundred thousand dollar bill of demolishing a house. And then find out that it just can't be sold for something in the, you know, that could be improved. You know, we know it can be sold. We already have a proposal. It's sold to be rebuilt as housing, the residential housing. Um, so that would be my thoughts on it. And then to take a deeper dive into what is possible with the industrial zone. When people are moving to the board, we want to let them weigh in and say, hey, um, yeah, maybe I, he has experience. And he knows some, some people that he could say, you know, we can reach out um, to use the rest of the industrial zone, you know, for something, you know, first. As I understand it, most of the entire industrial zone might have been this.
Right. Uh, yes, besides those four structures.
So the other thing is, are they going to sell that to anybody? Now, or for a respective business that can come in. But my, my instinct would be to, at this time, not change any of the use group or look at changing that until we get more information. And if we wanted to move forward to allow that to be rebuilt, look at carving out just that small section of the residential house floor. That might be better.
We can't carve that because they have, they have to do that. We can't sit there and say, oh, we're going to make them the three lots. And remember, well, they just, the senator thing, they actually had to buy the property of. And I thought that would be a nice solution because it almost looked like there was some of that with it was divided into thirds, and then it was divided up. That would help.
I, so She's not just the zoning where the houses are. That's all I'm saying. Just, just change the
They have the zone, a lot. So there has to be a lot that you can rezone. To, to right now, it's a 14 or whatever it is, an 18 acre lot.
I don't think he's talking about the existing lots.
There's like four lots within, yeah.
I didn't, wasn't thinking that there's, there's lots within the lot. Well, let me just, then I'll just say that, just for a swift thought, and the tribe that actually do the initial thing would be to, uh, so you're right, that, that, that's definitely this one area to go. But the other thing would be just, if you just did a my special review and write down some criteria that if you touch people's own, you know, residential, that'd be done. And you have a moment here to be able to input. So that might be one other way to sort it. But I, I think now to understand, you know, the result of those lots. But if there even may be a certain, what would be helpful for all of us and for the town was that? How many, because the ones right there in the CBD that they can use. Those are also, you know, some law too. So there's just, how many actual residential properties are there that, and that don't in the entire town? We might, we talked about five or six, so it's not like, uh, five or six properties. So we can't sit there and say, oh my goodness, this is, this is just too much to try to deal with. Might be looking at a very small located problem. And then I would also say, well, here could be a good problem, I think, with this. So I apologize to everybody. I guess I saw how they're all squared out, but I always was fine. By it could be in the stronger, larger lot. It was also because they actually told me. But with that proposal provided, it kind of deserves to be a family. So. But special review may be another way, just in short, but I'm dealing.
You're saying special review for housing? You can change instead of use table to an R?
To an R, just, yes.
For a quarter?
For industrial.
Yeah, in the industrial, but yeah. For all of the residential use groups.
Well, we have, basically, yeah.
So it looks like there are six parcels in the industrial zone. There's the big one, this Myerton property. There's the northwest, northeast corner, that's the property started this. There are the two particular properties right next to the burned down house. Uh, that could be sell, that's free. And then there's one kind of northwest. Do we have an idea of, you know, this one or those other, of those individual parcels?
Uh, yes. Uh, they can be searched on Property Viewer. I'd be happy to. Um, but I know like one of them is an STR owner.
Yeah, they're all separate individuals.
Yeah, yeah, individual families. But no, no, yeah. So if you go on Property Viewer and you're citing like 55 Quoten Court, you can actually click on each individual and I'll tell you the individual owners.
Big Myerton owns the bulk of it, but yes.
Correct. Um, something I just wanted to throw off there, maybe there was some feedback on this too. Um, with, was steering housing said we did change, um, industrial mixed use and family care home. Now, it used to be special reviews. Uh, so that really did kind of take away some uses. Which I don't, uh, just bringing that up to see if that actually makes sense to the board or maybe that's another clue for thought. Um, some feedback on if that makes sense or not. Quiet.
Something's just making us think.
Well, this is just a, this
Well, I was gonna say, if you, uh, yeah, we have, we do have, um, we do have some public on. Um, and if you, if you want to maybe take breaks and throw it to the public, I'm happy to.
Okay. I didn't realize you had that.
Yeah, we, uh, we have Myers.
Public comment on this discussion item? Does anyone wish to speak?
This is Greta. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm going to turn on, um, the timer for you just a minute.
Okay.
Is your name and address, please, for the record?
This is Greta, Myerton's booth. I joined just to listen and understand the processes of what is going on on the entire Wolf Tongue Court property, including 19 Wolf Tongue, the burnt cabin. So I'm just listening in for educational purposes. Thank you.
Were, were you suggesting earlier that the previous decision to limit mixed use in other zoned areas has decreased the availability of mixed use?
So, um, some initial conversations when the potential buyers came up to us was, um, you know, oh, you can do this mixed use. And then we realized, no, that it changed to no. So it kind of, the, the mixed use really is like office space, like, you know, you have a little commercial down and this. And it took away that use. So I, I would say from a staff perspective, yeah, you kind of took away use that that makes sense to some. There's also that general commercial there and neighborhood commercials. So it kind of makes sense to, it could make sense to get that used, but I'm not sure if that's the planning commission's opinion.
The mixed uses are also prevalent, yes, use by right and CBD and general commercial. And, um, that's for you in high density residential and they have the purple. So we actually added it, correct, Britt? We added it to high density residential.
That's correct.
Yeah. So even though we took it away from one, we added it to another. So.
By review.
By review, yeah. But it was by review, I think, in industrial as well.
Has there ever been the consideration to provide incentives to private land owners to develop affordable housing or more multi-housing?
So before, before we get there, are we closing public comment or did you want to make sure to see if anybody else?
Is there anyone else on?
Um, I believe, um, I didn't know Laurel or whoever her is. Did either one of you want to make any comment before Chair Williams closed it? I think so. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
All right.
Uh, can you have that again? I'm so sorry.
Well, we'll close the public comment and get back to the commission for the discussion.
And just a real quick, I want to make sure they can hear you when you speak. Can you guys hear commissioner because number one she speaks?
We can. Um, some people are louder than others.
Okay, see, I can't as long as that.
I'll turn around.
Your answer, when you turn your head away from the microphone.
Yeah.
It's sometimes garbled.
Okay.
I had asked earlier if the town had considered ever a incentive for private owners of big getting land to build more multi, uh, multi-family housing or duplexes or ADUs, that kind of thing.
Um, so I would say in the affordable aspect, we did pass during the housing study where if they keep restricted, they can get up to 15% of their setbacks. Um, so for instance, it was like 15% distributed to go for 7.5. You couldn't do that with type. Um, but in regards to, uh, just alternative housing, yeah, the board trustees made a lot of that use by right. Um, we are seeing some here and there. Um, another thing is, uh, there's been a water study that's still going on. And, um, the possibility of, you know, is it by square foot instead of this, you know, flat fee? And so I think there's more incentives to come, but obviously as a town, we just don't have um, the financial like incentives to have owners do that, but we do put them in the right resources um, in regards to affordability and hope to continue to be able to do that. That was, um, kind of the purpose of the title searches for the town of properties too. So I can keep continuing to have these conversations with affordable developers. Um, instead of kind of getting blocked by, oops, there's this agreement to only have a public park. And I'm not sure if that answered the full question. I'm very helpful. Thank you.
Well, and to be clear, we only just passed those ordinances at the end of 2023.
Yes.
So like those, those variances to give, you know, 50%, um, it, it's just recent. I mean, that's, that's a recent incentive. And then to articulate duplex, triplex, fourplex or tiny houses, those again, were only just recently at the end of 2023. So we haven't even like, imminent links yet.
Yeah.
We're what?
Permits are coming through. Yeah. So it's, um, you know, we are, we are in talks with people who are interested, but it's, they just finding, finding the land and what makes sense and if they can, um, team with the town. Um, I'm on a lot of, um, housing needs weekly to try to receive how we can do that and how we can maybe partner with some of our mountain region and even Dopplo.
And one of the proposals for 2025 is to apply for grants where half of the time is a housing coordinator here in Netherland. And then the other half is in
In Lyons, yeah. So that was submitted. I'm still waiting to hear back if we got that. I'm very hopeful because it's a lot of work. It's definitely a lot of work. So yeah, um, half of there, it'd be a full-time person, but it would just be half their time in Netherland and half their time in the city of Lyons.
So like, we're making those movements toward the affordable housing and identifying the parcels and putting the incentives in place. So I would say like, that was, that was a huge part of our strategic plan last year and we're executing, which is cool.
So, so getting back to the issue at hand is, um, should we be considering making changes to the industrial use table for residential? Just go back to the basic question. On that first, yeah. No, then should, but we can fix it by, pretty much, but my, my caveat would be if there was any change. Yes. And definitely would recognize special reviews, not use by right. Uh, but my recommendation is not to change the, it's all into that information. Okay. And to, if we want to solve this problem, to look at rezoning just that portion of the industrial zone, we're going to have to process all of it. Right. I agree.
There's, I've thought that, uh, you know, we do talk about rezoning, but that will not, which is that's a loss as well because there are, there are non-performing houses.
Right. Well, so I think it's not the same example, but having conversations.
No, the same thing, but I don't know.
These actions, can, can we just decide to rezone these individual residential use lots or do the owners have to come to us with that? God, we can just be like, oh, now you're probably so innovative.
Attorney Madison, with, um, could you further speak on that? Yeah, I'm not sure if you heard it. So let me know if I need to repeat.
I, I did hear, yes. The town can actually rezone property on its own. Um, you know, particularly related to this particular situation where the property is being used for one use. It's a, it's a non-conforming use for these four particular properties.
So we can fix it. Any other comments? At this point? Yeah, I kind of like the idea that, um, trustee Sterling mentioned about, you know, we're going to have this inventory of all time property. We'll get more comment back from the SC group. But I think that the comment that we're hearing from the commission tonight is to really not change the use table for industrial, but rather change some of the, the, uh, non-conforming parts of, you know, these, these industrial lots.
That's great feedback. And again, this will come for you again, but probably more so in the more so in the, uh, kind of what the title searches look like, how to make that presentation as well. Um, and some more, kind of more discussion with SC group. So your opinions, my opinion?
Sure knows.
So the houses that are currently there that are, have residents and could they change that and do like industrial in those houses?
Yeah, that's excuse by right.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, they could decide.
They can decide to change.
Exactly.
The balance.
Right.
Do they have to be notified if it's a change in facility to make it just residential?
Yeah, I don't, um, I can allow Attorney Madison to speak for it, but I don't know that we'd have interest in just doing it without talking to these owners either, just the way that I've seen town operate and town staff.
Yeah.
But, uh, Attorney Madison, from a legal standpoint, we'd have to notify them, correct?
Yeah, yes. It would be, any rezonings are, um, both quasi judicial, they act like quasi judicial, you have to have a notice and hearing, but they're also legislative.
So Attorney Madison, does that then mean if we did just those four parcels there, you know, change the zoning map to where that, you know, maybe was being against your residential? And then at a later time, somebody who has one of those parcels, they would then not be allowed to do use by right industrial, uh, use because we changed the zone. So we would be actually taking something away from those other three residential houses that they decided they wanted to do that. They wouldn't be allowed to, that's on separate.
Yes, that's correct.
Having those able to have other abilities based upon whatever something changed.
If something already happened, like their house broke down, if they couldn't get it built in six months, then they'd be in exactly the same situation. Right. I think you said this, but if not, I just wanted to make sure. We would like to also give the presentation of the tiny commission of the other lots available for two and one houses.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to. Yeah, I will, um, I can make that presentation here as well, smaller, smaller, which I'll go over the kind of samples next month, but it's a little bit small.
When is the other presentation scheduled? Can we attend that?
You can attend it. It's gonna be July 16th and I'll present it to the board of trustees.
Thank you. Um, Attorney Madison, there was a comment that you had made at the B O T meeting where, um, sometimes like a municipality may want to decide, and it was, it hit me as interesting that a municipality will want to decide to sort of clean up those non-performing type of properties into the, the zone that it's supposed to be. I forget how you said it or what you said. So forgive me, I'm not doing it justice. But could you maybe remind yourself of that was?
Yeah, I, I might not do it justice either, but I know exactly what you're talking about. But, but the idea with non-conforming uses is generally that they can continue on while those uses are, are operating. But once those uses stop operating, the idea is that you want to get them into conformity. Um, so, you know, for these uses, these residential uses and then industrial zone district, that's why we have the fairly strict standards. I don't know if they're all that strict. Um, for if there's, if the property owner stops the use, or if in this case, the use is, is destroyed, um, then they need to do something else that's permitted in that zone district.
So, so for example, I think Rick mentioned that there's an S T R in, um, as one of those properties. So if they, um, terminate their license, they cannot get another one because it's not permitted in industrial.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the point, okay, okay. So now I remember what you said, um, is that the point being is that when a municipality typically grants a non-performing use, the idea is that if something happens to that property, that non-performing use will go back into the originally zoned use. Did I say that correctly?
Revert.
Well, revert back. That's a great, better version. It would revert back to, yeah. So for instance, like this building, right? Um, it had a non-performing use. It was a residential. The idea of what Attorney Madison, now, now I'm recalling what she told us in that B O T meeting, was that we have these other provisions in the code, like you have to rebuild within six months because the idea is that if you don't, um, the protections are in place to make sure it goes back into its original use, which was industrial. And so that when she said that, I was like, oh, okay. Just added another monkey wrench.
Okay.
It'd be great to get the secret, your definition of what light industrial is better than speaking.
Sure enough.
We have a very basic definition of industrial in our section sixteen thirty-one. To establish and accommodate light industrial uses, internal processing.
That's amazing.
Internal processing and industrial uses of a vertical nature for aesthetic or safety reasons.
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Trustee Sterling said before about thinking about different types of light industry that would fit.
Fit us, yeah.
Fit us, right. And I'd like to also, you know, pick this up again as part of the town plan discussion when we get to it. Okay, so I think, I think that's good input. Anyone anything else? Now we move on?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we're, uh, we'll just move right on to the town staff report.
Yes. Did anyone have any questions in the town staff report? Now, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, the meetings are gonna be ran a little differently. I'm not Miranda. Um, and my role is crazy, so I didn't go through everyone's. Um, but there are some, you know, highlighted things from utilities. Mine is very short. I don't have time right now. Those will get more intact when I have time. Um, but yeah, let me know if you have any questions or would like me to throw some questions at staff maybe to, um, say next time. If we don't have questions, I'm happy to go over kind of next month's agenda. I was gonna go over board of trustees. Unfortunately, it's like keeps changing. So I might just update via email like, hey, this is coming before if you want to attend. I'll probably do that for the planning commission. But if anyone has questions.
Just had a quick question. Is there any update on the broadband or the internet?
So broadband, we're just waiting, um, permits. We're just waiting for permits to be pulled and then just kind of start moving forward with that. Um, I believe I've got to reach out tomorrow to figure out kind of where that's at further, but I know like it's still moving. It should be, I haven't gotten to that permit process yet.
So my understanding, this is similar question, is that will be executed by the end of the year?
Correct. Yeah.
You say executed, does that mean?
Viper in the ground.
Viper in the ground is the goal.
And then they're, then hooking up to it. It's a whole nother phase or?
Correct.
Process.
Viper in the ground by the end of this year, the hooky, I mean, I thought they were saying that it would be hooked up by the end of the year, but I could be wrong. That's not one.
I thought that's what they were saying. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. I'm happy to get that updated. Also. Any other questions? I can make an answer. Can we put all the power lines underground while we're? Power lines underground, I wish. That's so expensive. I think some people are doing it as they build, some people, but, uh, that's quite an expensive project. We have trucks and jobs to, I just hope about that.
Okay, um, before you go on to the board of trustees, um, what's coming up there? What's, what's coming up with us next?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll have to email the board of trustees because it's, it's changed a few times. I've added items, I've moved items on theirs because I'm presenting like for the next month, um, with them. But, um, for us next month, we will have a road vacation request for nine Navajo Trail. Um, comprehensive, um, SC group will be coming, will be discussed with the three mile plan along with industrial uses. Um, and then the town owned parcel title research, I'll be giving the presentation on that. And then staff report, right? Something else could possibly pop up, but that's just the plan right now.
What's the bright way vacation?
Uh, it's for nine Navajo Trail. Um, there's, they're gonna be going for, um, I can't remember the exact details right now, but they're gonna be going for a vacation on the street on there. So I have to kind of really dig into that, have a dig into that.
Is the town bringing this forward or?
Nope. The owner. The, the property owner. Yep. So to come before you guys first, um, at our next meeting, and then it'll go before the board of trustees, August sixth.
Will there be, uh, we start seeing applications for a replacement? Commissioner, by next month, or will it be pushed off a little more than that?
Um, I'd like to try to get that done as soon as possible. So that would be mine. Um, I sent out, I already notified some people who had applied last time and then, you know, we're gonna put it like we usually do. So my goal would be to get that out as soon as possible and then talk with the board. No, yeah, no, but to come before you guys and go to the board trustees. Any more questions?
We're gonna know a couple of things coming in the next couple of weeks for the final, early data here.
Um, I think. Uh, yes, July second. Um, I'm not sure what's all going on, but I will be making a presentation with interstate parking to really finalize, um, the, these parking details. Uh, would recommend if you're interested, you know, either listening in or notifying. We've had a lot of people come to town hall and so Peter's creating, Peter and I are kind of creating this informational, like passes aren't ready yet, decisions haven't been made. Um, so really getting that educational piece out there that's not ready, but please come to the July second meeting if you have some comments to make. Um, I don't know. Is there anything new? I'm like, I have so many little things. Go ahead.
So some potential topics that are coming up may get moved around. Um, Caribou Bridge Private Roads Convoyance, um, the Caribou Bridge Annex, however, we do not perform street, um, payments. So town's been digging into that to kind of figure out why, how, all the things.
But the question, Rick's question.
Yeah, and yeah, yeah. And so that's kind of.
They want change then, sorry?
Yeah, they want street maintenance.
They want street maintenance.
So. Um, so that's gonna be for the B O T as well as what Brett said, the interstate parking. And, um, and then also at some discussions around the watershed protection ordinance and our nonprofit funding application. Then, um, the second meeting in July, we are talking about, we are introducing our new town administrator, John McCain. Um, we're getting a comprehensive plan update in the SC group. We get one for one month. Um, there's also a community wildfire protection plan that Troy is gonna come to us with. Um, Andrew just gave the industrial pre-treatment ordinance, which was breweries, wineries, commercial type entities, the things that they need to put more in place and over protector of the water before it gets planted. Um, you know, whether that's, you know, different traps, all those kinds of things. So we, we discussed that at the last meeting. It's coming up for us as an action item. Um, as is the fifth street, um, gridway vacation. Um, we also have a marijuana license lottery process. That sounds fun. Um, we have a P P A Old Town Shop Phase One results to review and housing update following the title searches. So that's happening.
Nicole, could you give us just a brief summary of the S T R, what happened there? Because I'm not sure everyone, you know, we all had a big part in this, so the ones just sort of just on the rise, what?
Yes. Um, and let me go back to you, so that I can share this on. Um, and so, yeah, so there was originally the proposal that had the recommendation that I've got from you all, going to a single license type. Um, and we most recently discussed, okay, single license type, uh, makes a lot of sense, you know, just the general S T R, basically. That's what that would be. Um, however, there was also the commercial license type that the B O T had wanted to see as well. Um, and part of the discussion was around, like, how much do we cap it? We originally, I think, had looked at like sixty maybe as a part of the cap.
For the, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're right around fifty-two. Um, when we looked at the percentages and everything, we're like, okay, we can go up to ten percent, ten percent of our housing stock. Ten percent of our housing stock put us up to about seventy, seventy-two, um, of the actual licenses that we could give out. And so that's where we settled on. It was a general, um, a general S T R license plus the commercial, all under the cap of seventy-two licenses. So ten percent.
The planning commission originally recommended eight percent, which came up to about sixty.
Right. And so right now.
It's gone up from our recommendation of eight to ten.
And the, the reason because we.
With commercial.
Exactly. Because we didn't, the fear was, okay, if we don't have it, what does that open itself up to? Um, and we're like, well, let's at least go forward with this. We can always kind of revisit it. All of a sudden, D C has, you know, hundreds in the waiting and, you know, we want to create enough of a demand, but not, um, uh, but to also have a commercial wrapped into that cap. Because originally the cap, I think, was just for general. If I remember correctly.
Correct.
But the cap was for, for everything. Yes, we, we definitely intended to, for preservation of housing stock, to have that cap at sixty, a hard cap across the board to, that was, I remember that discussion around that was, you know, mainly to preserve housing stock and to prevent people from, you know, committing by additional housing stocks that are in the best public.
Right. Yeah. So, so instead of eight percent, went to the ten percent threshold. So seventy, seventy-two right for the actual, yeah. Um, but so yes, that's ultimately.
How is commercial, do a short-term rental or how is that put in?
Sorry, sorry.
You said it was up, so we could allow for some commercial short-term rentals or? So how, how, what would be an example of a commercial entity that applies for a short rental license?
So like in the commercial business district? Basically. And so.
Could be a residence within that district?
Yeah. Yes.
It's still one license per.
One license. So this was also a little bit of a tweak that we did. It was one license per, and Attorney Madison, I might have to argue with the, the language because we were very deliberate about it, per person, entity or organization, I believe. Um, one of the things that an LLC will have to confirm is that they only have one S T R under their option. So a person could have multiple LLCs, but that one person is only allowed one S T R within a municipality. So that was something that we were very deliberate and. Right. In fact, we, what we did is we put a question on the application that says, do you verify, can you verify that you only have one LLC under your ownerships?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. So we put a, we put a question actually on the, on the application. So it's, it's, you know, we're taking the benefit of the doubt that folks are meant to be, you know, trustworthy and, and want to do good. Um, the question and the extra verification is just to make sure, like you said, we're, we're keeping the housing stock in check.
And the other, um, items we had in there, like fire, fire pants.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Okay. So none of that changed. So really pretty close to what we set out, is that?
One hundred percent. Yeah, it's very, very close. Um, like I had mentioned earlier, we did take industrial, um, S T Rs off of the, um, availability, just because again, to align with what was already in the U S group tables of the residential.
Right.
So, but there was one, I believe, that got grandfathered in.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. So. But again, like you mentioned earlier, if they drop that license, there's no, you know, with us in the flyboard and that, and that's on.
So I just wanted to follow. So do we not have anybody applying for S T R license? We only have fifty-four and now we have up to seventy-two. We only have 54 and now we have up to 72 available. That's like another 18.
We do have interest, not like the thin flux, I don't believe. But, um, I don't, you know, I've kind of been in my own world, but I, I think I've maybe seen three or four come, like of interest come in, but nothing, there's not like this huge, everyone wants one. I think a lot of people are kind of looking towards like the A, A D U's and want to see what this water study it's going to bring about because the square footage will really kind of promote A D U's. They're not, they're not very beneficial to build right now, the P F's.
Right. Which is kind of the next, like, we knew going in the housing plan, like this was going to be a thing that we had to solve. Or was the P F, the square footage and everything? So the A D, like you're saying, it can't afford $40,000 for my 200 square foot or 100 square foot A D U or whatever it might be, right? I mean, that's just ridiculous. So this is the really next big chunk in making affordable housing actually affordable to build.
Yeah, we do have, I will say I do heavily get a lot of interest in A D U's, but when I say if you want sewer, it's not attached and you want to get sewer and water, you're looking at 60K. A little bit above that actually to just get started. That's not a good building. That's not building permits. Um, and so I think there would probably see an increase in some of those because we've changed that language with the housing study. If the pits were comparable to the size of the unit.
Would that apply even if it isn't A D U attached? Would the pits still be prioritized based on square footage?
Uh, you don't pay an additional pit if it's attached to the.
I'm just saying in general.
You've already had it.
Yes. If, if it changed to the square footage and the footprint was much larger because of it, then yes.
I guess what I'm asking is right now for those fees on a new bill, I guess regardless of whether A D U is part of it, are we, are they paying the fee based on the square footage of the bill?
Right now it's just a flat fee. It's like, I want to say it's like 40 and 20 or something along that lines. 40 for water. And then, um, like around 20 for sewer and then you're paying 1,500 each for the tap fees. Um, and then that's just a portion of your building permit.
And that won't change for single family homes, see if they have a smaller square footage?
Uh, not right now. It could, because our study is still going on. Yeah. The watering study is, uh, going on right now with Ractulus. Um, so we're, it, it's just something we had like heard. I, I think it is something that other towns do. Um, so we're just looking to see if that's the feedback they get because you will see some pretty large houses in the same. There's like somebody who builds a pretty small, like almost tiny house. Uh, and that's a habit involved. Which is very important.
We're hoping to complete the RIC study by the end of the year.
They certainly got that discussion and then made that decision when they did. And everybody remember, we're still paying a huge bond. So every dollar of our tourism and sales tax came bonds. So we have to deal with it. And things that, right? So we can, we can work on certainly the idea of just a small tiny house playing safe as big house needs to be discussed. They actually have that discussion. Same thing that came up with apartment house, it's trying to like just.
Turn on your microphone and keep talking.
Yeah, apartments and then like duplexes, those are usually, um, Andrew Bliss looks at those and there, there's a higher pit fee. You can do that for multi, yeah, multi units. Even that's just like, you're looking at, uh, I think it's like a three fourths cap. You're looking at that like 60K to start off. Um, and again, a little bit more than that. If you go multi unit, you're 100 plus.
Okay. Anything else? Saying that anyone want to bring up anything else other business? If not, favorite? Move to a time.
Um, all in favor?
I.
Um, most are meeting adjourned at eight 36.
Hi, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye.